This is the final school committee meeting for our vice chair and our colleague, Erin Kinzono. Mrs. Kinzono has served on this committee continuously for 12 years, since May of 2007. During that time, she has served as chairperson twice, played significant roles in the efforts to construct two new schools and pass an operational override. She's played a major role in policy overhauls, been an active liaison with parent groups, and of course, has been an invaluable colleague and friend to the nine people who have had the privilege to serve with her on this committee. While all of us here at the bench will have some parting words for our friend and colleague, we have a number of special guests with us in the audience this evening that I will recognize briefly who each wanted to come and make some comments about Mrs. Kinzono's service to the committee and to the community. And I would ask those of you to please line up behind the microphone in whatever order you want. I'll start calling on you by name if you don't come on up, because I know who you are. We'll start with Mrs. Kinzono's former colleagues. If you'll introduce yourselves, come to the microphone or the table, whichever you prefer. You would begin, please, by introducing yourself.
Sure. John Samia, former school committee member, precinct seven. It's always odd being on this side of the table after being on that side of the table for many years, but did it a few times last time, Dale, I think, you and I with the fiscal projections a few years back. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I had the honor of serving on the school committee with Erin for nine years. We started our first full term together back in May 2007, and we learned and grew together as school committee members. I remember talking quite regularly, particularly early on, as we navigated through the first few months on the committee, and tried to figure out how the committee works. During this time in our tenure together, I had the great fortune of getting to know Erin. Erin is a smart, dedicated, and hard-working colleague with an unwavering passion to provide equitable learning opportunities for all students. She is a person of the utmost integrity, who always will choose to do what is right as opposed to what would be politically expedient. You accomplished so much during your 12 years of service in the school committee and have so much to be proud of, including your extraordinary efforts as a member of the community's supporters for Sherwood and related service in the Sherwood Building Committee, which brought us the Sherwood Middle School. For the benefit of generations to come, this project was completed ahead of schedule and under budget. Your service as a member of the Policy Subcommittee, as Mr. Pallach has talked about, actually, I think you hold the record for the number of years on the Policy Subcommittee. You have been at the forefront of developing or amending policies that will ensure the long-term vibrancy of our school district, and your unwavering leadership during many years of unprecedented financial and regulatory challenges which allowed our district to deliver an educational program that our community expects. Thank you for your thoughtfulness, your professionalism, and your friendship. After taking some well-deserved time off, I hope that you will get involved in some other capacity soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. Would like to go next. This is Remington.
I'm used to standing up here. So, I'm Suzanne Remington, and Erin and I got acquainted several years ago through some of the many campaigns and ballot committees that Mr. Samia and Mr. Pallach just talked about, and we actually ended up becoming fast friends and realized that we grew up in towns next to each other and graduated from opposing rival high schools the same year. I just want to talk about two qualities that I see in Erin that I think most likely help her become a really effective school committee member and team player. Erin is an excellent listener. Erin will listen, 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 and she thinks before she speaks. So, she chooses her words carefully, and as they used to say about E.F. Hutton, when Erin Kinzono speaks, people listen. And I'm sure her children really always do that, too, right? I'm sure they follow that. The other thing about Erin is that she's a natural caretaker. She was a teacher. She's a wife and a mother, a daughter, who has done a lot of caretaking for her loved ones, and also for her school committee members and colleagues. And I know that she thinks of all of you as friends in addition to colleagues and has a great respect for you. So, in a way, I'm sure that she's taking care of all of you at different times and listens to you during your time you've worked with her. So, she's also been a caretaker for thousands of Shrewsbury schoolchildren, so very indirectly, but in her long tenure on the school committee, all of the kids that have come through here, she's been advocating for them, supporting them, strengthening their education, and recognizing the need for a high-quality and well-rounded education for all of them. So now that she's stepping down, I don't think we've seen the last of Erin Kinzono. I hope we haven't, because I expect that she will rest yet, become involved, as Mr. Samia mentioned. I expect that from you, actually, Erin, that you will remain involved in the community. And many of you don't know what Erin's latest caretaking venture is. It's a beekeeping. So Erin and her husband Dana and I are taking a bee school together, actually, about beekeeping. Erin is getting an A+. I think Dana is probably getting an A, and I'm actually failing. I've missed most of the classes, so I wish she's going to be tutoring me. So now Erin, you have the responsibility of caring for tens of thousands of bees, because we learned that there were between 50,000 and 80,000 bees at the height of the population in the summer in central Massachusetts. So you need to keep the bees alive, so no pressure on you there. That's not too hard. Make sure there's abundant honey and educate them. So, thank you so much for your service and for your friendship.
Thank you, Mrs. Remington. Who's next? Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Pallach. Mark Murray, former school committee member and present Finance Committee member. You know, John and Suzanne, I think, really hit it on the head when they said all those nice things about you, and I concur, obviously, but I think of, when I think of you, Erin, I think of someone who really loves kids. And I think anyone who does this job, who works in the school committee, you have to love kids. And that comes out every day, you know, that you're on the committee and the work that you've done. It's something that has really impressed me over the last eight years that I've watched you and then the four years that I worked with you. I wish you all the best, and I hope you're a better beekeeper than I am. Good luck.
Yes, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Who's next? Ms. Mitsus.
Hi. I'm Lauren Mitsus, and we met way back when I was in the teacher role, and then we worked together on so many projects, and then ended with the friendship role, which I'm so honored to call you. So I wanted to thank you for 12 years of truly dedicated service. And when we look around our town at the many new landmarks, your handprint is upon them, from Sherwood to our beloved library and soon-to-be Beale. But what we all really appreciate most is the way that you did your job. Your thorough research of projects, your questioning, but most impressive, your open-minded spirit and attitude, the way that you came across everything as an active listener, consistently able to view issues from all perspectives, weigh them in objective ways. It's not only what you did, but it's always about how you did it, Erin. And on a final note, Erin Kinzono, you make the best Irish soda bread in the whole town of Shrewsbury. Thank you, Erin.
Anyone further from our audience this evening would like to offer some remarks. Dr. Ben, welcome to our former Shrewsbury Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anthony Ben, 1994 to 2009.
So Erin is my hero for a variety of reasons, one of which, of course, is that she was able to be on the school committee for 12 years. I was on the school committee in Wellesley for three years. And you know, superintendents, I think, certainly with me, we spend a lot of time telling the world how we're drinking from a fire hose and how much work there is associated with the job. And when I became a school committee member in my own town, I realized, wait a minute, wait a minute, we don't show up for a meeting every two weeks, and that's all there is to the show. So we did all those kinds of things. So it's really extraordinary that you've been able to dedicate so much of your time and who you are to this town. The other thing is, I'm just so struck by the things that people have said already, particularly that notion of leadership and waiting and listening, which is what you were so good at. I mean, actually, you were on the school committee for a couple of years only, and then most of the time, we interacted when you were off the school committee. But that struck me when it was commented on your ability to listen, because that's certainly a hallmark of who you are. I'd also like to say, in addition, as I, you know, make a couple of comments, is that don't take it for granted how special this community is. The fact that Erin served for 12 years says something about Erin. It also says something about the school committee. It also says something about the entire community. I do a lot of work still, and I find myself in lots of different communities. And I reference Shrewsbury all the time, because I tell communities that, you know, we get what we deserve often. And there are school committees and communities that turn over superintendents every three or four years on a regular basis, which brings great instability to a school district. It affects the professional staff, and it certainly affects the kids and their achievement. When I did a workshop for MASC in the fall, I referenced Shrewsbury a couple of times, because my understanding is that Shrewsbury has had four superintendents in 50 years. That is an extraordinary achievement. It makes this place very special, because the stability and leadership that we can have because of all of you, and certainly Erin, because of all of you. That has provided the kind of professional culture that you have, the leadership that comes forward that you have, and the high achievement that you have. It really is just plain terrific. And then a little bit more personally, as I, you know, as I think of Erin, because now I've been retired, although I'm flunking that, I think you all know that. I've been out 10 years. I think it was Albert Einstein who may have said it, that education is what you have left when you forget everything you've been taught. And what I have left is an essence of Erin after I forgot all the interactions that we had over those years. And that is exactly what the people said already in terms of the deep integrity and honesty that you bring to the job, which is such a role model for school committee members and leaders anywhere. And, you know, just, this world needs a lot of Erin Kinzanos around right now. And I don't end in a happy note. I end up in, you know, a thankful note, a note of gratitude for you as being part of this wonderful, wonderful community, because it truly is, and I have a better sense of that now that I'm away from it. And I agree with previous speakers that there's no doubt that you'll continue to make good contributions to this community and beyond. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ben, and thank you to our community members who've joined us this evening to offer their comments. We did actually, in just a moment, I'm going to offer our central office team a chance to offer remarks of their own, but we did actually have another component of our community folks, which I've been asked to do tonight. Our legislative delegation, Senator Moore and Representative Kane, both wanted to be here personally. Unfortunately, both the Senate and the House are in session this evening, and they have asked me to present you with, from each branch, a citation from Senator Moore and the Massachusetts Senate extending you congratulations for your many years of dedication and exemplary service as a member of the school committee, and it's signed by the Senate President and Senator Moore.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And from Representative Kane and the Massachusetts House of Representatives, in recognition of your many years of dedication, leadership, and exemplary service as a member of the Shrewsbury School Committee. You have served our school community and students with a passion for excellence in education. Your leadership as co-chair of the Sherwood Middle School Ballot Committee was significant to the passage of the ballot question to build the beautiful new school. Our community is grateful for your service, and your mark will be long felt in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, and it's signed by Representative Kane and the Speaker of the House.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Central office staff, Ms. Malone will go outside and make her way to the center.
Okay. So Erin, when I think about you, I also think of very thoughtful leadership, that ability to listen and really reflect on a topic. I also think you've always brought many perspectives, including the perspective of someone who was an educator, and the perspective of someone who knows how important it is to teach all students something that's very important in our current strategic plan. But what I really want to talk to you about is punctuation. So I think a comma should be placed wherever I have to take a break in a really, really, really long run-on sentence.
Oh, no.
Like, I think that's where a comma goes. You think there are other rules for where commas go. And I want to thank you for sharing your wisdom about those rules with me and leaving me petrified to write anything in your presence. Thank you very much for all your support. It's been great.
Thank you, Mark. And actually, before we move down the line, I neglected Ms. Belcito in our audience this evening, who will have come up to the microphone or sit at the bench, if you prefer.
So, in thinking about our work together, I know it's only been a short couple of years, but what I've truly appreciated is the immediate notion of support that I felt when I started in Shrewsbury. And one of the ways that this happened was through our connection with the Shrewsbury's Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And I think what I learned very quickly was that your kind, thoughtful, supportive, quiet demeanor was also your way of also listening and thinking about what questions should be asked about the best services and programs for our students and how do we get there. Your expectations about having that group come together and meet and to have those important discussions really means a lot to me in my professional work here in Shrewsbury. So I thank you for all of your time, your effort, and I have enjoyed our conversations. I do like our Irish heritage. We have that nice connection. So I really appreciate your dedicated service and commitment in being a role model for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belcito. Mr. Collins.
Yes, sure. Thank you. Well, Erin, I know we got to work together for a few months back in '07 before I left the district, and I was kind of able to watch from afar all of your work, and especially around the override and the building project. And I think it's certainly one of the things that hasn't been mentioned, but I think is really important, is the fact that, you know, these past 12 years that you've invested so much time and energy beyond these meetings, but at home, you know, talking about and thinking about school matters, and at the same time, you know, raising your own three children who are here tonight, and that's quite a challenge. So you've done a great job on both fronts, of course, and I, too, would be remiss if I did not mention those three words, Irish soda bread. And it was always a pleasure, honor about St. Patrick's Day, that you would come in with a couple of still-warm rolls, and we would all pretend, yeah, thanks, yeah, we'll put them in the back, and then after you left, certainly after you left, it would just be crumbs. So I hope you might just consider continuing that tradition even though you're not.
Delivery.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Clutter.
I'm feeling a little sorry for myself, frankly, because I've had the least amount of time with you. I know you've had 12 years.
She's just trying to get closer.
I lost a wheel.
See, Erin, when you left, the wheels are already coming off.
I will leave this way as I'm talking.
Your work must go.
This is a little distracting. I'm not going to lie to you, but I did prepare something specific to say, and I want to continue with that, because I think your dedication to the district is inspiring to me. So I think of E.E. Cummings, the poet, who said, "It takes courage to grow up and turn out to be who you really are." And I think one of the things that strikes me and inspires me when I reflect on you and the strengths that you bring to Shrewsbury is that you have always been who you really are. And from the time we had at lunch, and you talked about the kind of really full notion of what it means to be successful and what that means for students in the district, to your listening. I mean, I think every leader really focuses on how to strike that balance between talking and listening, and when you listen, you listen with your whole heart. And so I'm reminded of that statistics about so much of communication is totally nonverbal, and you've always been that way for me. So when I get into talking mode, you remind me to open up and do more listening and more kind of genuine listening about projecting your values in that way. So I'm sad that we're losing you, but I know that you will contribute in many other ways, and I think the best testimony to who you are is the range of people sitting out there. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clutter. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. In terms of, when I think about what makes a community a great place to live and what makes a school district a great place to teach and learn, to me, a big part of the answers to those questions are servant leaders like Erin Kinzono. 12 years of extraordinary service to the school committee, to the community, countless volunteer hours doing this work as a public servant. You know, the longer I've been doing this work, the governance of public education is important at all levels, but it's most important at the local level. That's where it makes the most difference. And I think that when you look at what separates high-quality school districts that really serve children well, it's about strong leadership at the local governance level and the stability that Dr. Ben referenced. But over a course of time where I think you can look back and feel enormously proud of lots of accomplishments that our schools have achieved, but during times that weren't always the easiest, especially for school district leaders and school committee members in terms of making very difficult decisions that had real impact. And I think that how the district has evolved over your 12 years of service is a real credit to you and, of course, your colleagues on the school committee over those years who are here and here this evening. As people have mentioned, I think, you know, your leadership, your being humble, dedicated, always supportive of our work as administrators, very supportive of educators, being an educator yourself, of course, but ultimately an advocate about what's best for students. That comes through loud and clear, and whether that, and certainly I have the benefit of certainly being present for all the different public discussions, but certainly the individual discussions I've had with you over the years, you know, what you see is what you get. There is not a different Erin Kinzono behind the scenes. It is totally authentic leadership and support for the work that we do, and always, in the minute of a decision had to be made, asking and trying to determine what ultimately is in the best interests of the students we serve. So, you know, we talk a lot here about culture and about our core values, and I think for me, and it comes from the top, and you exemplify the core values that we try, we strive to achieve, and we talk to new staff about them being aspirational, and of course, we're not perfect, and we're always trying to get better at them, but you're about as close as it gets in trying to exemplify them. So we appreciate that, and it's an amazing example to follow. So collectively, on behalf of the district, thank you for all you've done. Personally, thank you for all the support you've given me over the years, and also, little-known fact, when you still were teaching in a preschool setting, I had the great fortune of having you teach my daughter, Ally, for a year, which was also a great time. And certainly, as Patrick mentioned, of course, having Dana here this evening, who has, you know, supported your work behind the scenes all these years, and it's been certainly wonderful to have Annie and James and Mary come through and graduate from Shrewsbury High School. They all certainly brought honor to our school district, and they're continuing to do great things as they go forward beyond Shrewsbury High School, and it's very special to have them here this evening as well, as well as your former colleagues and friends. So thank you. And just on behalf of the administrative team, we do have a small token of appreciation for you, and I think Mr. Collins is still hiding it under his desk. We'll pass along this card.
There you go.
And...
Oh, look how lovely you keep it alive.
You hear you have a green thumb, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's pretty.
You can't hide behind it.
You can't. You can't put that in front of you.
So last but not least, and thank you, Dr. Sawyer, the group against whom Mrs. Kinzono decided the company of stinging bees was preferable. Dr. McGee.
So I've been preceded by people who are far more eloquent than me, and I'm used to making whatever point I make between contractions, so I'll be brief. Probably the most important thing that a parent does is raise children, and I think your number-one achievement is in the back row here, and you did a superb job of that. And not only that, but while you were raising your children, you decided to improve the education for everyone's children in this community, and there's a lot to be proud of there. When I think of you, I think of someone who is generous. I think of someone who is kind, and I see how, when people come before the committee, they're always tense, and you always put them at ease, and you're always so good at that. So I will always appreciate that. I'll remember that, and as I say, you have much to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Mrs. Fritz.
One of the first individuals I spoke to when I was considering running for a seat on the school committee was Erin. We knew each other previously from our involvement in other community groups, way back to CBS and the first override. And like Erin, I had school-age children and wanted her perspective, not only on the role, but also how do you balance work and family and the time commitment to the community. And over the 11 years I've served with Erin, I've come to deeply admire her commitment to education or community. Erin's quiet, but she does not hesitate to stand her ground for what she believes in. She's always fair, balanced, and her decision-making, and she wants to make sure everyone is involved and that their opinions are heard and considered. We've shared a lot as community, as committee members, but more importantly, as friends. We've watched our children grow up. We've shared the ups and downs of parenthood, and I see you all back there, but we've had a lot of laughs. You know, we really had a good time, and for me, it's not goodbye. Dana is still stuck with me, but see you soon.
Yes, I too.
And I'm going to miss sitting next to you at meetings.
Yeah.
And some of you don't know, but after every meeting, regardless of what the meeting is or where we are, we always talk to each other in the car, on the phone. Every, Dana, that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
If I'm not in coming in, Bob's like, oh, she's on the phone with Erin again. So we have this ritual, so I'm really going to miss that. That was always our time. But I'm really, really excited for you as you move on to this next phase, and I'm going to miss you tremendously.
Thank you. Me, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. So I have thought a lot about what I wanted to say tonight, and I kind of swirl around two topics, and that is the influence that Mrs. Kinzono has had on me, but also on the example, I think, that she sets for the community. So there's this funny little narrative arc to Erin and I. One of the perks or facets or features of being a member of the school committee was that you were in attendance at every Shrewsbury High School graduation exercise. And the first graduation that Mrs. Kinzono attended as a member of the school committee was actually mine. And fast forward five years, it's my first time attending as a member, and Mrs. Kinzono was up on the stage handing out the diplomas as chairperson. And as chair, and when I was a new member, took the time to help me learn the ropes, was very, very patient with me, and was something of a moderating influence, is a mild way to put it, but certainly helped me to grow into the role and helped me to... They're still laughing. I know it wasn't that funny. Certainly helped me to grow into the role and helped me to be a more productive member of this committee. And flash forward another number of years, and it's your last time, and I'm the one up there as chair handing out the diplomas. And I find that a nice little arc, because I feel that Mrs. Kinzono has had a tremendous influence on me and has helped me to grow and develop my leadership style. And I don't think that I would be able to contribute as effectively to this group as I would have had I not had your influence over the years. And what I want to say about Mrs. Kinzono, who I think is a really great example to the community and to everybody, Mrs. Kinzono, to me, is a very, very significant example of courage. Mrs. Kinzono does not like attention. The discomfort, as we're all talking about her, is palpable for those of us sitting up here. Mrs. Kinzono is not someone who I think ever imagined she would run for public office. She's not attracted to the idea of her name on a sign or giving a speech or her picture in the paper. She is not fond of some of the unpleasant conversations or confrontations that are an inherent part of advocacy. She is one of those people who really, really should be involved in public service, but so often chooses not to put their name forward. And Mrs. Kinzono sometime about 12 years ago decided that she was going to do something that was very uncomfortable, very much not first nature to her, and probably more than a little scary, and she put her name forward to serve in an elected role. And she did that because it was necessary to preserve and promote the cause of public education in Shrewsbury. And as Eleanor Roosevelt always said, you know, courage is not the absence of fear, it's overcoming it. Different things are different challenges to different people, but, you know, to know Mrs. Kinzono is to know that she's really the last person who, you know, might want to put herself out there as somebody seeking support, and she did it, and there are thousands and thousands of kids who have benefited from it, are continuing to benefit from it, and will benefit from it for generations going forward. So thank you for everything that you do. And before we let you say anything, we have a little token of our appreciation that we'd like to present you with, and when I say little, I don't really mean that. She's coming back, I promise. She's coming back, I promise. I think.
Door one, door two.
A token of our appreciation.
But it is recognizable.
And it is the proper Shrewsbury Colonial's gold paper that Sandy picked out.
Would you like me to open this now?
Yes.
Okay.
Can she open it?
Okay. Then, can you pull that one? This is lovely. Thank you so much. Picture of the town common. Thank you. Yes.
We'll put it back.
Yes, you can.
Wow, well, let me just say, thank you. Oh my goodness, thank you so much to all these people showing, you're not going to believe me, I can show you, Mark Murray, John Samia, and Tony Bent, you were in my remarks. So the fact that you all showed up, thank you so much, and the friends, and the children, sneaky children they were. Okay. So I'm going to read my remarks, because I can't speak off the cuff about this, written them about four different times, so this is, is what it is. Thank you. It has been a roller coaster of a ride these past 12 years, and I'm thinking of the end of my time here, not as a retirement, but as a graduation. The amount I have learned from this experience has been staggering. I've learned about school budgets, and Chapter 70, and Circuit Breaker, and how to think big picture, and plan for future outcomes for students who are just starting their education. See, I'm going to lose my place. I've learned how to be in a leadership role, and run a meeting, and address disgruntled citizens, not that I like to do that very much, but, and how to chair a ballot committee for the building of a new middle school. I've learned how to fine-tune a message that I could present to town meeting to advocate for our budget, and how to prioritize needs in a way that protect the classroom as much as possible. I've also learned that listening is a valuable skill in understanding all sides of an issue, and collaboration and compromise are essential in building consensus. I've learned that kindness is not a weakness, but a strength, and that all of us respond better and work harder when we know that the people around us understand our concerns and have our backs. That is the most important lesson I've learned. I believe that it's the people that make the school district successful, the educators, the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, the nurses, the counselors, the custodians, the bus drivers, the assistant principals, and the administrators, central office, the school committee, but especially the students. Even during those very lean years, when our budget was being cut down to the bone, and I would grow discouraged, it was the students who inspired me the most. And all of their successes and failures, in hard work and perseverance, whether it was dressing up as their favorite person from history, or doing hopscotch on rugs to show us how they learned their math, or describing what it took to achieve a state championship. Each time that I would lose heart after a difficult budget meeting, I would remember them, and their optimism, and their faith in us. I did my best for them during my past 12 years. I think we all did our best, and I hope I served them well. As many, as most of you know, since I came on the committee, my family has been impacted by chronic illness. These diagnoses, the first in 2010, and then two more in 2013, altered the course of my children's lives and that of my own. After teaching preschool for a few years, I had planned to return to teaching English. But the reality is, is that sometimes hard things happen, like chronic illnesses, like a recession. And plans have to change to fit the circumstances. My experience on the school committee helped me to navigate my new circumstances in two key ways. First, it prepared me to be an advocate for my daughters in the healthcare setting. I was kind, polite, but relentless in asking questions, and becoming an active participant on a team that would care for my daughters, just as I learned how to become an active participant on this team. And secondly, and not to sound overly dramatic, but this role saved me. Every teacher, every principal, every central office staff, and especially every student who came to present in front of us, or whom I met in the classroom, lifted me up, inspired me, connected me to the good work that's being done in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. I may not have been able to be in the classroom myself, but I could still be part of a team that was focused on preparing students to reach their fullest potential, whatever that was. I can't stress how grateful I am for that. It carried me through some very dark days, knowing that I was still connected to the lives of children. So I thank the community for allowing me this opportunity, my colleagues at this table and beyond, like Tony Bent, John Samia, Mary Beth Banyos, she's not showing up, is she? And Mark Murray, and for all whom I've worked, whether it's been knocking doors for overrides in new schools, or attending building school committee meetings, or PTO meetings, or traveling to High Tech High, or King Middle School. It has enriched my life and caused me to view the world in a deeper and more vibrant way. Of course, I must thank my family, my parents, who held signs and fed the troops and believed in me unconditionally, my children, Annie, who practiced her driving skills back in the day by dropping off and picking up lawn signs, James, who analyzed voter results by precincts, which was definitely a real-life application of his math skills, and Mary, who in third grade coined the phrase, "Build a bridge and get over it," which I have always taken to heart. All three would drop everything to hold signs, provide feedback on important issues impacting the schools, and would engage in vigorous debates about turf fields, iPads, school safety, that caused me to see issues from all sides. They are my three most valuable and respected advisors, and I could not have done this job without them. And to my husband Dana goes an enormous amount of gratitude, because this job comes with sacrifice, and he made it, so that I could come here and to the numerous other events that we attend. He listened and encouraged me and attended a lot of those same events, too. He may be the one most relieved that this time has finished. I know we are both looking forward to a quieter Wednesday night schedule. It has been such a great honor for me to serve this town and its children, and since I am graduating and not retiring, I will continue to be committed in supporting this district in any way that I can. Thank you.
That actually brings us to the end of our agenda. We do not need to go into executive session, so I would at this time ask Mrs. Canzano if she has one final motion she'd like to make.
A motion to adjourn? So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you.